Welcome everyone to Columbus City Council Chambers for the Judiciary and Court Administration Committee’s public hearing on the Mayor’s proposed 2016 budget. I am Councilmember Eileen Paley, Chair of the Committee. And tonight, we will more closely examine the Mayor’s 2016 budget proposal for the Clerk of Courts, the Judges, and the City Attorney’s Office. At the end of the presentations, we will open for a public comment portion of the meeting. Speaker slips are available in the back of the room, and we’ll be accepting them for a few more minutes. Speakers can bring their slips to Mr. Grant Ames, who’s behind me, or place them in the box near the doorway. First, we’ll be hearing from Franklin County Municipal Court Judge, the Honorable Ted Barrows. Thank you for joining us this evening, Judge Barrows.
It’s my pleasure, Councilmember Paley. Thank you for the invitation. My name is Ted Barrows, as you mentioned, Chair of the Municipal Court’s Finance and Budget Committee. And with me this evening, although they’re camera shy, are Emily Shaw, our Court Administrator, and John Davenport, the Court’s Finance Director, who got as far away from the cameras and microphones as they possibly could. The Court’s Administrative and Presiding Judge, Judge Brant, and our Vice Chair of the Finance and Budget Committee, Judge Vanderkar, who also presides over the Drug Court Specialized Dockets, could not be here this evening and send their regrets. The Court’s budget, as recommended by the Mayor, amounts to $17,875,376, which the Court feels is appropriate to meet our 2016 operating expenses. The 2016 General Fund budget includes $370,652 to assist the Court in providing essential contract services for evening and weekend security. Additional general fund monies will continue to support our specialized dockets program. Over the past 10 years, the innovative and problem-solving dockets have been created, five of them, and they’ve all been certified by the Ohio Supreme Court and are actively operating within the confines of the Court. These dockets focus on mental health, drug and alcohol dependency, including a rigorous heroin court program, human trafficking, and a program dedicated to our military service members and veterans who experience multiple interactions with the law enforcement and with the Court. The Court has forged partnerships with other federal, state, and local government agencies, as well as private treatment centers, nonprofits, and others to familiarize program participants with the services that are available to them. This helps the Court provide wraparound care so that the underlying issues that contribute to a participant’s criminal behavior may be successfully resolved. The specialized dockets have reduced the overall number of jail nights, improved community safety through lower recidivism rates, reunified families, and have returned many participants to a productive life, contributing to the community in a positive way. Side note, the story in the Dispatch from yesterday morning had statistics regarding the recidivism rate for one of the specialized dockets. The others have similar effects to report and are a good investment for the city. The Court’s 2016 request of $340,000 from the city to support the specialized docket programs is a carryover amount and remains the same as last year. The county commissioners are also echoing their support and are pledging an equal match in the amount of $340,000, and the Court offers its sincerest thanks to the City Council for helping us to maintain these essential dockets, and we appreciate the Mayor’s inclusion of them in the budget. While the Court’s not predicated on revenue as a revenue-generating resource, we do recognize our responsibility in defraying the costs associated with administering justice. We’re continuously evaluating ways to provide more services via government and community partnerships, grant funds, and fee increases when and where appropriate. The Court currently uses special revenue funds established by Ohio statute law to pay for technology-related expenses, which mostly, most recently includes installing audio and video systems in all of the Judges’ and Magistrates’ courtrooms. This effort over time should reduce our reliance on personnel to capture the Court’s official record. Effective September 1st, 2014, the Court increased court costs from $1 to $3 on certain case types to help provide sustainability to the specialized docket programs. These funds are designated toward the operation of these specialized dockets. Also, effective January 1st, 2015, the Court authorized an increase to all payable fines for violations of city code ordinances and state statutes. This increase is projected to bring in an additional $500,000 annually to the city’s general fund, and it was a change that we made at the suggestion of the Finance Department, bolstered by the City Auditor, who sent me a spreadsheet pointing out the fall in the funding that was generated by the Court to the city. Another specialized revenue fund is the probation user fee. This fee is assessed per probationer and offsets the cost for programs, required training, drug testing, staff wages, and other operating expenses of the Department of Probation. The current probation user fee is $10 per month for the period of time a person is placed on probation. Our strategic priorities for this coming year include the following: municipal court building will be undergoing an extensive total renovation over the next several years; cleaning the stone exterior of the building and replacement of windows began this past summer; window replacement work will continue during 2016, is going on even as we speak; additionally, upgrades to major core building elements, including replacements of mechanical elements and the IT backbone, the replacement of passenger and prisoner elevators, which have been problematic in recent years. Due to the extensive work to be performed, many of these projects will span multiple years. On the technology front, the Judges are now using an electronic search warrant and subpoena application while they are assigned to the duty room to do all-day, evening, and overnight search warrants for the various law enforcement agencies. The Court has been diligently working with the Columbus Division of Police to train their officers on the electronic process that includes the appropriate court-sanctioned warrant and subpoena forms. And at this time, all Columbus police officers are using this service. The Court has been working with local and suburban law enforcement agencies to offer the electronic process and provide training to their staff. Goal of this project is to eliminate, to the extent possible, the need for law enforcement officers to physically drive to court during business hours or to a judge’s location after business hours to have a warrant issued. Once in use countywide, this process should provide significant resource efficiencies to law enforcement agencies. This is a biggie that I’m really proud of. In September 2015, the Court was awarded a $611,000 multi-year incentive grant from the Department of Rehabilitation and Correction Services. The purpose of this grant is to establish a pretrial services program for the Court in order to reduce the length of incarceration for pretrial detainees, especially those with significant mental health issues, and to reduce the number of pretrial issuance of failure-to-appear warrants and orders in. This grant will also provide pretrial supervision services to oversee and monitor defendant release conditions and to help ensure their appearance in court. Today, at our Judges’ Meeting, we met five new employees that had been hired by the Probation Department under this grant. We expect this to be in place in mid-January and to start providing additional information to the arraignment court Judges so that they can make better decisions on the likelihood of a person to reappear and the threat that they may present to themselves or the community if they are released. Also, during the fall of 2015, the Probation Department began investigating what community resources are available and could be productively used by defendants who are sentenced to probation. A relationship was established with Job and Family Services, and they now provide a benefit specialist who is onsite at the Probation Department two days a week to assist probationers with enrollment in Medicaid, food stamps, cash and childcare assistance, and supplemental security income. The Court will continue to look for additional community resources that are available and also beneficial to probationers. Over the past two years, audio and video recording equipment was installed in the Judges’ and Magistrates’ courtroom and the traffic arraignment courtrooms. In 2016, the Court will continue to develop its standards and protocols for long-term storage and maintenance of audio/video recordings, and will investigate additional uses for the equipment. This is in line with our goal, along with the Clerk’s Office, to be a paper-less environment in the relatively near future. The Ohio Supreme Court asked this Court to be a pilot partner to implement and evaluate video language interpreting in the courtrooms. I heard today that part of that pilot project is going to be able to use a laptop with video instead of trying to make a phone call to an interpreter, which is really kind of a clunky way to do business. So I’m pretty excited about the uses of technology to make all of our work a little more efficient. The Court looks forward to continued collaboration with other governmental partners, council, the Mayor, the Common Police Court, the Commissioners, and the Sheriff, for example, leading to greater program efficiencies, cost-saving measures, and increased funding, all of which affect the Court’s ability to achieve its strategic priorities. Councilwoman Paley, thank you for this opportunity. I and my staff would be glad to answer any questions that you or other members of council might have.
Thank you, Judge Barrows. I applaud yours and the other Judges of the Franklin County Municipal Court for your enthusiasm for public service, as well as your success in the courthouse. I know personally that Franklin County Municipal Court is the talk of the state with regards to its innovative ways, partnerships, collaborations, and saving money and saving lives. So I appreciate all your hard work at the Municipal Court and look forward to working with you soon.
Thank you, ma’am.
Next, we will hear from Franklin County Municipal Clerk of Courts, the Honorable Lori Tyack. Clerk Tyack, welcome to Council Chambers.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Councilmember Paley and staff. Today, I have with me my Chief Deputy, Obie Lucas, my Fiscal Administrator, Crystal Ross, and my Director of Public Relations, Marilyn Stevens. It is the mission of the Franklin County Municipal Court Clerk’s Office to accurately maintain, safeguard, and store all court documents, as well as collect and disperse all money as directed by legal mandates. The Franklin County Municipal Court Clerk’s Office has both countywide and citywide jurisdiction. Land annexed by the City of Columbus extends into two other counties, Delaware and Fairfield. It is my vision to employ, train, and empower a knowledgeable and diverse workforce to serve all who use the office through competent customer service, communication, and community outreach. In 2015, my staff participated in training provided by the National Center for State Courts, the FBI, the Ohio Highway Patrol, the Southern Poverty Law Center, the Franklin County Sheriff’s Office, the Franklin County Department of Human Resources, and the City of Columbus. These training opportunities have provided both professional and personal growth for my staff. Our strategic goal is to continue to find new ways to improve the operations of the Municipal Court Clerk’s Office and to cultivate cooperation with other government agencies to better serve all who depend on the Clerk’s Office for accurate record-keeping. The following are among the strategic priorities that will be the focus for 2016. The objective of these priorities is to save valuable taxpayer dollars, better utilize staff resources, and lessen the carbon footprint of the busiest municipal court in the state. The Clerk’s Office will release a new website in early 2016 with a responsive design. The new layout will self-adjust to any electronic device for a more user-friendly view without requiring an application download. On average, the phone bank and our criminal traffic division receives more than 200,000 phone calls annually. In 2016, we will be expanding services to include web chat to expedite customer service. Our e-filing pilot for civil-environmental cases is progressing well. We are currently in the testing stages. The electronic ticket pilot initiative with the Ohio Highway Patrol has been successfully implemented in Claremont County, and they are ready to begin testing with our office. This project will allow an electronic submission of citations in a data format along with an image of the ticket directly to the Clerk’s Office. And finally, we are working to develop and implement a digital continuity plan to safeguard and manage digital images, files, and all related information for efficient storage and backup according to legal mandates. The Ohio Supreme Court Technology Committee will be making recommendations for this very important initiative. This plan will ensure the security, integrity, and availability of digital records into the future. I would like to thank you, Councilmember Paley, for hosting the “Bringing the Courthouse to the Community” event. Participants included the City Attorney’s Office, the Public Defender’s Office, Community Mediation Services of Central Ohio, the Franklin County Municipal Court, and the Clerk’s Office. The Clerk’s Office offers a variety of services to the public, many of which are not well-publicized. This was an excellent opportunity to provide information about our services and to network with other agencies. Thank you for bringing us together. I hope City Council will continue to highlight these valuable resources for our community. The Franklin County Municipal Court Clerk’s Office has adhered to our target number as provided by the City’s Department of Finance and Management. Our proposed budget for 2016 includes $10.9 million for personnel, $129,147 for materials and supplies, $809,500 for services such as postage and fleet, for a total budget of $11.8 million. The Clerk’s Office has agreed to take a 3.3% vacancy credit for a total projected savings of $358,415, or the equivalent of six employees. Two expansion requests have been submitted to the Director of Finance with City’s Department of Finance and Management. The first is a request to transfer a technical specialist from the Computer Fund to the General Fund. The second request is to add one additional Courtview Specialist to our IT staff. Currently, we have only one Courtview Specialist. The Office of Information Services, consisting of seven employees, works daily with the Franklin County Municipal Court, the Franklin County Prosecutor’s Office, the Franklin County Sheriff’s Office, the Columbus Division of Police, and many other county and city agencies, providing misdemeanor and felony warrant reports, as well as on-demand database searches. This additional position is necessary for backup purposes and for continued support of both the Clerk’s Office and Court staff, as well as our criminal justice partners. The Franklin County Municipal Court Clerk’s Office currently contracts with three collection agencies to collect debt owed to the Court on criminal cases. In 2015, over $3.6 million of unpaid fines and costs were referred to these agencies. The total recovered was $886,098, or just 24% of the amount sent. Cases returned to the Clerk’s Office due to the defendant being arrested, filing of a probation violation, revocation hearing, or warrant totaled $318,635. Bankruptcy is also a valid reason cases are returned to the Clerk’s Office. In 2016, the Clerk’s Office plans to pursue collection of court costs, fines, and fees in civil cases by analyzing processes and procedures for continuous improvement strategies. Our goal is to more effectively collect filing fees associated with cases filed by government agencies when filing fees are deferred to the end of the case. We also plan to implement a follow-up tickler system for defendants who are ordered by the Court to pay court costs and fines. These ticklers, which have been historically set up in criminal cases, will be expanded to include civil cases. With these strategies, we hope to improve collection of fines and costs in 2016. The Franklin County Municipal Court Clerk’s Office serves to bridge municipal, county, and state initiatives by providing support to collaborative law enforcement partners and other government agencies. In 2015, the Franklin County Municipal Court Clerk’s Office provided assistance to or participated in the following programs: the Central Ohio Crime Stoppers; we provided off-site assistance to the Ohio Highway Patrol, the Franklin County Sheriff’s Office, the Ohio State University Police, and Columbus Division of Police at OSU home football games, and other law enforcement initiatives. We participated in the 2015 Central Ohio Homeless Veterans Stand Down Program, and we helped serve over 528 veterans. Franklin County Environmental Court hosted their third open house. We participated in that event. And in 2015, we also participated in the Franklin County Justice Exposition and Health Wellness Fair. We sponsored a blood drive in which 39 donors participated. The success of these programs is the result of state and local government agencies working cooperatively to provide excellent public service. I would like to highlight just a few of our special projects. With the assistance of the Columbus Division of Police, our fingerprint station outside of 4C Arraignment Court processed over 4,000 fingerprints of defendants who were charged with reportable misdemeanors. In October, the Clerk’s Office held a workgroup meeting consisting of representatives from the Mayor’s Courts, 19 Mayor’s Courts in Franklin County, including the Clerk of Courts, Magistrates, Prosecutors, the Public Defender’s Office, and the Defense Attorneys in the local area to discuss a new procedure for transferring Mayor’s Court cases. The goals and objectives of this workgroup included the creation of a uniform submission page to be used by all 19 Mayor’s Courts, to determine and recommend commonly-used forms, and to make recommendations for a more consistent and timely transfer process. The Franklin County Municipal Court Clerk’s Office strives to follow the green initiatives as outlined by the City of Columbus and Franklin County. Over the last five years, $32.1 million has been received through our electronic payment program, saving valuable staff time in processing paper payments. The total number of electronic payment transactions from April 2010 to December 2015 was 189,736. Our daily recycling initiatives have saved over 600 trees. In addition to daily recycling, the Clerk’s Office purchases environmentally preferable procurement such as recycled paper, file folders, and toner cartridges. I would like to say thank you to Mayor Coleman, Director Rakowsky, Councilmember Paley, Columbus City Council, and the citizens of Franklin County and the City of Columbus for the opportunity to provide excellent public service. I’d be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Clerk Tyack. I want to thank you for being mindful of your expenses and costs and working to save the city and Franklin County money. I am also quite impressed by your desire to work outside of the courthouse, to serve the citizens of Franklin County, and to bring services to them. I know that’s an effort that City Council has been working on also. And the collaborations with other agencies to improve efficiencies is also impressive. Thank you for your presentation today, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Next, and last but certainly not least, we are joined tonight by City Attorney Pfeiffer and his staff. City Attorney, thank you for joining us.
If I might ask those that are sitting where the mics are, that presented, if you could leave so that some of our other people could sit. Not that I want to insult the Court or the Clerk, but for efficiency purposes, each one of our people is going to sit. Thank you, Your Honor. We got two up here. Chair Paley, thank you very much, and thank you to Clerk Tyack and Judge Barrows for vacating their seats so our people could sit there. Your Honor, I am the Columbus City Attorney, and the City Attorney is the chief legal officer for the City of Columbus. We defend the city when it gets sued. We advise, we look at contracts, we advise various departments when they have questions. And this would begin my 14th year as City Attorney. Basically, Your Honor, we are asking for basically what’s called a continuation budget. And we’ve thrown up on the screen a chart that shows historically what this office has gotten from the General Fund since I became City Attorney in 2003. So if you go to the bottom, you’ll notice that we’re basically asking for slightly less than a half a million dollars more for next year than we’re spending this year, which is about a 4% increase. Over time, when I first got here, it was a tough time. We made some cuts. I got a tough time again in ’08. So in certain years, we were able to return money to the City Treasury. And this year, I think we’re going to give back $150,000, which might not have been a good thing. I probably should have figured out how to get that to my staff, so I’m sorry. Now, what will this budget do? This budget will fund an operation that consists of 124 full-time people and 38 part-time people. Of those 124, 63 are attorneys. If you look at what we started with in 2003 to what we are now, we have 30 less employees, but we’re still delivering, in my opinion, a high level of legal services to the City of Columbus. Now, while we spoke of what the General Fund would give the city, that’s not all the money we’re going to spend. There are other sources of funds that the City Attorney’s Office gets. If you look at the chart, you can see that the General Fund itself is slightly over $12 million, but we will receive monies from what we call our land acquisition. That is to say, when our real estate division works with other departments, basically public service, public utilities, when we acquire interest in real estates, we charge back to those departments our services, so we call that land acquisition funding. You see that we’ll get $35,000 of these. There’s some criminal diversion funds, and there’s some grants totaling $273,000. So our total expenditures next year should be approximately $13,700,000. Now, I’d like to thank Linda Helms and Kristi Plants, our fiscal people, for making sure we put this budget together, acknowledge that we’ve worked very closely and cooperatively with the Department of Finance and Management. I also like to thank Mark Rutkus of our staff, who’s put together this PowerPoint. And now, I would like to thank the attorneys from this office, my office, who are going to individually present to you what they do. I’m very fortunate to have a strong senior staff that does excellent work, and I’m very pleased that they agreed to come tonight to carry on this presentation and tell you what we do. Thank you. Do you have any questions of me before we move in?
No.
Thanks, Chair.
It appears, based on the slides, Councilwoman Paley, that I’m the first presenter, which I’m Bill Hedrick. I’m the Chief of Staff, the City Attorney’s Office. I head the administrative section for the office. The administration section is basically the business office for the Columbus City Attorney’s Office, so we oversee all the purchasing, budgeting, technology, and all the HR issues for the office. We oversee 161 employees, and that’s basically the summary of what we do. If there’s any questions now, or if you want to segue to the end, ask any questions, Councilwoman, I will segue to Josh Cox.
Thank you, Chair Paley. My name is Josh Cox. I am the Chief Counsel, and one of my duties is to serve as Chief of the General Counsel Section. The General Counsel Section essentially serves as the in-house counsel for city officials, their offices, the departments, all the boards and commissions, as well as the non-city entities the City Attorney’s Office represents, which you’ve heard from previously, the Municipal Court and Municipal Court Clerk. We provide the day-to-day advice to various city agencies dealing with issues such as contracts, ordinances, code interpretation, charter interpretation, and general legal questions. And with that, I’ll turn it over to Mr. Mangan.
Thank you, Chair Paley. I’m Tim Mangan. I’m Chief of the Litigation Section, which provides defense to city employees in the City of Columbus in the federal and state courts. Most of the cases last about a year. Some go longer than two years. They’re resolved through motions to dismiss, motions for summary judgment, occasionally a trial, and sometimes settlement. In 2015, we had 58 new cases seeking $17.7 million in damages. During the year, we closed 53 cases that had aggregated approximately $150 million in demands, paying out $337,500. We have 85 cases pending at this time. Most of the cases, or a majority of the cases, are police cases in federal court involving use-of-force arrest. Occasionally, we have some cases that involve shootings. We also do a lot of cases that have to do with vehicle accidents and construction damage. And occasionally, we bring the lawsuit. We filed a lawsuit against the state of Ohio to prevent the enactment of a provision that would allow people to deal with the situations around the reservoirs, so that we filed a lawsuit to prevent that law from going into effect. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pam Gordon. I’m the Chief of the Labor and Employment Section for the City Attorney’s Office. There are four other attorneys that work in that section with me. We are responsible for handling all of the labor and employment-related issues that the city might face. We do the arbitrations with regard to the city’s seven collective bargaining agreements. We’re also in state and federal court, from trial up to appeal on any employment-related litigation, such as discrimination cases. As you can see by our numbers, we have currently 110 pending cases. We resolved 47 cases this year, most of them in the city’s favor. I think one of the biggest values that our section brings is our ability to work with our HR folks before they make decisions. It’s not always reflected in the numbers, but what we do- It's not always reflected in the numbers, but we, what we do prevents a lot of litigation because we have an opportunity to put the city in a defensible position before they take action. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Weidman. I manage the City Attorney's Claims and Collections activities. Our section is comprised of four attorneys, two investigators, and four support personnel. My staff handles pre-litigation claims made against the city when the claim amount exceeds $2,500. We advise and we train city departments and divisions on the handling of claims less than $2,500, and we are, we also collect delinquent debt owed the city. In that regard, our income tax collections represents the bulk of the cases that we file. As of November 30th of this year, we filed 3,140 tax collection cases in the Franklin County courts. Going forward, and with cooperation of the Municipal Clerk's Office and the Income Tax Division, we have set a goal of filing in excess of 4,800 cases in 2016. By filing those cases earlier and in lower dollar amounts, we push more cases into small claims court where the cost to the defendants are lower, the process from start to finish is quicker, and the time our office spends per case is shorter. Finally, our office launched a new initiative this year whereby we send low-dollar tax debt, usually $500 and under, to our outside collection agencies before we file suit. Preliminary results have been encouraging, and we will expand this process next year to keep those low-dollar cases out of the court system and to provide an alternative payment process for our delinquent taxpayers. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmember Paley. I'm Laura Baker-Morris. I'm the chief prosecutor. The prosecutor division of the Columbus City Attorney's Office is roughly 100 employees of the office. We prosecute misdemeanor offenses in the Franklin County Municipal Court, which you'll become intimately familiar with very soon. You're going to hear tonight from individual directors of the units that are within the City Prosecutor's Office. Over a course of the last year or so, we prosecuted around 120,000 misdemeanor violations. It's a lot. We did that with 23 to 25 attorneys on staff. We're looking forward into 2016 to electronic case management system going live, which will greatly increase our efficiencies. At the same time, Mr. Furby and I serve as the staff in the Police Body Camera Committee, and we recognize that we'll be getting a lot of new evidence coming in, and we'll be dealing with that, hopefully, with the electronic system that we're putting into place. So with that, I turn over to a number of the individuals I work with every single day. They're fantastic, and they'll tell you about the units within the prosecutor division.
Good evening, Councilwoman Paley. Thank you for letting me present today. I'm Annie Murray. I represent the domestic violence and stalking unit for the office. Last year, we handled about 6,000 domestic violence and stalking cases. We resolved about 4,000 of them, and there were about 5,000 victims represented by our office. We have several advocates that staff not only the regular courtrooms, but the specialty courtrooms, the duty and arraignment courtrooms, to make sure that the victims are, have advocates at every step in the process. We also have advocates on staff that do walk-in advocacy for anyone who needs to speak to someone immediately or by phone. Of the 5,000 victims, we estimate that they have at least two different court dates, and sometimes frequently three or more, so the advocates are making sure that they're contacting the victims, but also escorting them through the court process. In addition to that, our office has four full-time domestic violence prosecutors that specialize in domestic violence prosecutions. They actually have about a 70% successful prosecution rate, so given domestic violence cases and the challenges that we have, that's very good resolution. We also oversee several grants that provide additional staff person for our office: three courtroom advocates, one stalking advocate, a cyber stalking investigator, and two DV prosecutors. We meet daily with county prosecutors to, about felony enhancements; we meet weekly with them about stalking cases that should be or can be felony stalking cases, and we also collaborate with our local partners. We also, this year, coordinated the lethality assessment program with 19 different police agencies, including the Columbus Police, whereby law enforcement calls the local hotline choices and hooks victims at high danger for lethal harm up with advocates straight from the scene. In the first five months, the Columbus Police had over 1,000 screens; 70% of the victims were high danger, and 60% of them got on the phone with the shelter advocates, so that has been a huge success. I want to thank you for your continued support for our unit, and we look forward to working with you.
Good evening, Councilmember Paley. My name is Melanie Tobias, and I am the director of our Criminal Appeals Unit in the prosecutor division. The unit has two attorneys, myself and one other attorney, and a full-time paralegal. We also supervise anywhere from six to 10 law clerks that work in our office. Our unit handles all of the criminal appeals representing the state and the city stemming from the Franklin County Municipal Court, in front of the 10th District Court of Appeals, the Ohio Supreme Court, and occasionally in federal court. We provide ongoing training for our assistant prosecutors and staff members to make sure that they are up to date on all of the legal trends and criminal case law developments and criminal case law, to ensure that the outcomes in the trial courtrooms are sound and following all of the appropriate constitutional protections and statutes. Thank you.
Councilmember Paley, good evening. My name is Robert Tobias. I'm the director of the Prosecution Resources Unit. That unit basically oversees our intake section, our mediation program, and our checks program. One of the things that I do as the director also is I'm involved with our theft diversion program, and have been working over the last year or so, dealing with organized retail crime, both learning more about it and also trying to work with merchants and the police to get a better grasp on that issue. The biggest part of the unit is the intake section, where we serve citizens of Columbus. We had approximately 3,000 citizen complaints last year. A lot of the individuals who are filing these complaints would like to have criminal charges filed on their behalf. About 10% actually do, which means we have another 90% that benefit from our other services, such as protection order referrals, community resource information; we conduct mediation hearings and warning letters. And we anticipate that the numbers for 2015 will be about 3,000 citizen complaints as well. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilwoman Paley. I am chief legal advisor for the Police Legal Bureau. We have two attorneys in our office and typically a law clerk. We are in-house counsel for the police for all intents and purposes. In some ways, it's difficult to quantify what we do because we don't have cases and we don't collect money, but I'll try. We did approximately 300 to 400 hours of police legal training last year, which we think is an integral part of our function. We train all police legal recruits in legal issues. We do in-service training with all Columbus Police officers. We see every officer of the Division of Police every year for in-person legal training, where we cover current cases, trends, legislation. We provide 24/7 legal advice to the Division of Police through walk-ins, calls, calls in the middle of the night, and emails. The calls can range from questions about search warrants, to arrest warrants, to home entries, to arrests, to uses of force. We provide legal updates every month to officers covering recent case law and legal trends. We also provide legal videos, which are short, two to four minutes long typically, which is blasted out to them, which they see every month. We attend meetings, and we review and advise on all police publications, directive SOPs for legality. And what we're finding is, based on the current environment, there's more and more demands for more legal training for officers, which we're trying to meet. For example, the state has increased the amount of legal training necessary for recruits and for in-service over the past year, and we will work hard to meet that demand. Thank you, and I'll take any questions.
Good evening, Councilwoman Paley. My name is Steve Dunbar. I run the City Attorney's Zone Initiative. Our Zone Initiative consists of five attorneys, including me, and two and a half support personnel. We are called the Zone Initiative because we have an attorney assigned to primarily work with each of the Columbus Police's five zones. The city is divided into five geographical zones by the Division of Police. We assign an attorney to each one of those zones to work with the community in that area, to work with law enforcement and other city personnel in the area, and then see what resources we have with the City Attorney's Office to help those folks. The buckets that we work into, we attend meetings; as you see a summary there, primarily community meetings, primarily area commissions, also the big civics, police roll calls and training sessions, and then code enforcement is where we work with quite a bit. From those interactions, we have three large buckets of legal work. The first, the lawsuits under Ohio Revised Code 3767. These are nuisance abatement lawsuits based on criminal activity. This is bars, clubs, hotels, drug houses, any place where chronic criminal activity significantly impacts the neighborhood. The second big bucket we work in is the housing building code. These are nuisances based on the physical conditions of the property, so our vacant, abandoned homes, slum lords, unsafe living conditions will bring those lawsuits that can lead to anything from fines against property owners up to and including demolitions of dangerous properties. And then finally, a process obviously council is familiar with. We work with the Division of Police to determine appropriate liquor permit objections, and then our staff represents the city at the liquor objection hearings. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Councilwoman Paley. My name is Dave Peterson. I am the administrative head for the Real Estate Division of the City Attorney's Office, which is established under City Code 125.06, and I'm referred to as the Chief Real Estate Attorney. My division has nine employees, three attorneys, including myself. We have four real estate specialists and two assistants. Basically, our unit handles any city transactions involving real estate. That could be buying property, both voluntarily and/or through the threat of eminent domain or actual eminent domain proceedings. We assist in selling of city real estate, leasing both as landlord and tenant, and we assist in real estate exemption applications. We work with pretty much every city department, primarily public service and public utilities. We also work with the development department, as many development transactions involve city real estate. We work with recreation and parks for parkland, finance and management for fire stations, police stations, substations. We work with the mayor's office and occasionally city council members. As you can see by the PowerPoint presentation, we completed a number of major transactions this year, including the potential fourth water treatment plant up on Home Road. We also assisted in the acquisition for the future parking garage on Front Street. We also have a number of parcel acquisitions for road projects, sewer projects, and 2016 looks to be a very busy year as well, as you can see with the number of projects that came in during 2015, and we look to be very busy next year.
Thank you, City Attorney Pfeifer. I am pleased that you and your staff joined us today. It is very informative for the public to understand what the City Attorney's Office does, and I don't know that we've had all of your chiefs here before, but it's, I think, a good thing. The more information for the public, the better. I think the police legal training is very important, Mr. Furby, and I appreciate you being there for our police officers and for the public. As far as the zone attorneys are concerned, you're probably the ones that we get the most calls from, citizens and city council. The City Attorney's Office and zone attorneys have been very responsive to council and to the citizens of Franklin County, and I appreciate that. Thank you, City Attorney Pfeifer, and staff. City Attorney?
Chair Paley, thanks. Just a couple of closing remarks. Our staff is located in various positions in the city. Our prosecution is down at 375 South High Street. Our civil division's over at 77 North Front Street, and Mr. Furby's chief legal advisors are over at the eighth floor of the police headquarters. I'd like to point out that the senior staff behind me is the strength of this office, and they do excellent work. They're not only recognized by me and people here that they work with, but many of these attorneys make presentations at various CLEs, Ohio Municipal Attorney Association things. Jeff Furby's police puts out a legal update that goes out to I don't know how many law enforcement agencies throughout Central Ohio and, and Ohio. But if people want to know more about our office, I always ask people to go to our website. Now, it's not up here, but it's columbuscityattorney.org, W-W-W columbuscity.org. If you go there, you're going to find every division in our office; you're going to find the names of our lawyers and support staff, their direct phone numbers, their direct emails. You'll find listed all the contracts we've entered into. I know the word transparency is overworked, but there we are for public display, and we encourage people to call us and talk to us. Our budget's a very good one. Chair Paley, I hope you encourage council to, well, you may not be here. So I think you should view this as a tutorial in advance if you're becoming a, one of the judges of the 15-judge Franklin County Municipal Court. Thank you very much.
Judge City Attorney Pfeifer, I have already advised council I will haunt them if they don't. Be careful with, with the budget at the courthouse as well as the City Attorney's Office. You have always been a wonderful public servant, and your staff reflects that also. I've worked with a lot of committees in City Hall in my tenure, and I have to say, I recognize almost all of your staff, which is kind of unusual. I mean, but I guess it's because I'm an attorney also, but it's also because you're out there in the community, and the people and the citizens of Franklin County appreciate your hard work. I hope that you feel as good about your work as I do about mine, and I appreciate that you work every single day. Thank you, City Attorney Pfeifer, for what you do, and for your staff, all of you, for joining us today.
Thank you, Chair.
I want to thank Judge Barrows, Clerk Tyack, and City Attorney Pfeifer. I appreciate the hard work with you and your respective staffs have, have done to work with the mayor's office, Director Rakowsky, and city council to put your 2016 budgets together. I thank you and your staff for all your hard work you do every day of the year to serve the residents of the City of Columbus and Franklin County. At this time, I will open up the floor for public comments. I don't think we have any speaker slips, so I want to thank you for coming down to share your thoughts with us tonight. I want to thank Mr. Grant Ames and Mrs. Nancy Solly for all of your work on our hearings this evening. I want to thank you again to our presenters and your staff for your work and for being here tonight. And as I promised, Mr. Hedrick and Mr. Ruckus, we are done. Meeting adjourned.